Good evening. It is Tuesday, October 15th. This is the Guilford Board of Education. Welcome to our regular meeting. I invite you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We're going to start here with action on the minutes of September 9th, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the September 9th minutes? I have a motion and a second. Any comments or corrections?
I was not here, so.
Okay. I have one on page 2, 9.3, preliminary enrollment. There is about halfway down a note about the highest class size being 23 and the lowest class is being a kindergarten class of 15. It actually was 13, at least as of last September.
That's correct.
Last September, as in last month. So I did want to make that correction. We'll be looking at enrollment numbers today. That may change. And then in the following line, I just wanted to add a phrase that I think is important for clarification. So it reads, "All classes fall below the Board of Education recommended," and I'm going to want to add upper limit for class size, if we could. Any other comments or corrections? All right. So I have a motion and a second. All those in paper of the minutes as approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Ms. Reader abstains. Okay. Now I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2024 meeting minutes. Second. Any comments or corrections? All right. All those in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Delventura abstains. All right. We are now up to public comments for topics on the agenda. Does anyone have a comment on the agenda they'd like to make to the Board of Ed? All right. Hearing none. Up to review and approval of expenditures for the month of September 24th, September 2024. Dr. Hirsch.
The expenditures for the month of September 2024 were $5,310,077.09. And the expenditures and encumbrances through the end of September were 22.81% of the budget compared to 22.7% in last year, essentially the same. Salaries are in line with the prior year, similarly with employee benefits. On purchase services, we have a lower-than-expected spending compared to last year. That was largely because we have delayed some projects, so those expenses will come in later. We show a percentage of the budget expended higher than last year in the tuition that we've taken on, but that's due simply to timing. The timing of those payments will come in. Virtually everything else is similar to last year, so there's nothing really to report on that. There have been nothing really exceptional on the warrants, so it's a fairly straightforward fiscal report.
Right. We did go over this report and the warrants in the Operations Committee. That happened right prior to this meeting, but I do welcome any additional questions that anyone might have or comments. All right. Hearing none, then I'm going to ask for a motion to approve the September 2024 financial reports for this fiscal year 2425.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? All right. That's everybody. Thank you. Any communications? Does any of my colleagues have communications they would like to share with the board received in the last month? Nope. All righty. Moving along. Student reps, very exciting. This is the month of October when we have our student representatives joining us for the academic year and get to welcome some new reps with us. I am going to ask Ms. Chaff to come up and introduce them. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. You recognize Vincent from last year. He will be returning along with Kyra. Kyra has a concert this evening. She's singing with the chorus, so she couldn't be with us tonight, but you will recognize her next month when she's back. And then I have two new members, two new student representatives to introduce to you, starting with Kira Davenport. Kira is the captain of the girls' cross-country team. She participates in indoor and outdoor track. She's a member of the interact club, and she also helps to organize the logistics as well as, I think, help with peer tutoring in the high school. And in all of her free time in the winter, she coaches a girls' youth run club as well. And I also want to introduce, oh, and I'm sorry, she's a junior. I also want to introduce Zach Milano. He's a sophomore. He plays on the tennis team. He is the sophomore class president. He's a member of the business club and Leadership Congress. He volunteers with Unified Sports. And in the summertime, he does landscaping work. So welcome to both of them.
Welcome. It's wonderful to have you.
It's a pleasure.
Wonderful, wonderful. And so we would love to hear your report tonight.
Okay, perfect. To start off, Calvin Lee. Recently, Calvin Lee has been working to shape the students into participating and engaged members of society. This past week, Calvin Lee has opened applications for its students to be a part of this year's Student Council. They are looking for students who have good school spirit, good leadership skills, and some great ideas to better the school. On Friday, October 25th, students will be encouraged to wear pink in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. They will also be welcoming donations to the Susan G. Korman Breast Cancer Foundation. The next day, on Saturday, October 26th, Calvin Lee is hosting a color run from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. for its students. And finally, Calvin Lee hosted a bike, walk, and run day to raise money for the Action for Healthy Kids Foundation, a national foundation that focuses on the mental and physical health of kids all over the nation. Adams Middle School did not get back to me. And then some notes from Guilford High School. Most seniors are working on finishing up college applications. For many, this is a stressful period of time. However, for the most part, teachers are doing a very good job at understanding this stress and helping students with what they need to make these times a little easier. And the football season is now in full swing. The turnouts for these student sections and the school spirits have been strong and supportive. There have been some requests to move the student section into the bleachers to have everyone closer together. However, this would take a lot of planning and arranging with faculty.
As for A.W. Cox, this end of the year, discussing expectations with inclusion, respect, safety, and responsibility, especially these first couple of months narrowing in on responsibility. Secondly, some fall activities planned, such as a trunk-or-treat and Halloween festivities, as well as a couple of spirit days coming up, such as Crazy Hair Day, Green for Geroford, and Baseball Spirit Day. As for GHS, Unified Sports recently did a walkout with the GHS first-day soccer team last week on Wednesday. And juniors are preparing for PSATs on Tuesday next week.
For Guilford Lakes, I didn't hear from them directly, but I found on their website that United Way volunteers came and read to the Guilford Lakes students, and I think it was broadcasted on Channel 8 News. There was also a cultural arts assembly coming up next week, which was sponsored by the PTO, and they're going to do a musical performance focusing on the climate and weather. And then as for GHS, there's a career fair day for all students of GHS that's going to take place on October 21st. It's hosted by the parents group, GHS Connections. All students are welcome, and the parents in the community will talk about their jobs and hopefully encourage students, help them with their futures a little bit. Fall sports are headed towards SECs and states. We have cross-country, football, girls' swimming, volleyball, soccer, and field hockey, which has all been going pretty well for the sports so far. And then we also have musical and choral concerts that are happening this week with a chorus concert this night. And the fall play is in rehearsals with tickets on sale soon for the play Almost Made.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for any of our student reps on any of those?
Well done.
Thanks, guys. Absolutely. You are welcome to stay, and you are also, being busy people, welcome to go. So whatever you choose, but it's great to have, have our students back.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right. We're up to number eight on the agenda, Superintendent's Report. So I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Freeman.
Thank you. I only have one item for the board tonight. You have a packet that goes with that item. So October 1st is the official enrollment count. We spoke about this in August and again last month at your meeting, but the official October 1st numbers are in. You will note that district-wide, we're down approximately 50 students. So we've gone from about 3,100 to about 3,050 students district-wide. You will note the significant change in the high school. The high school is down by about 30 students. I'll also note that kindergarten did not enroll quite as we expected. I mentioned last month when we met, we had budgeted for 12 kindergarten sections this year and have only filled 11 kindergarten sections. I am not sure, but some speculation may be that the change in start date, we had that delayed impact, and so we may see a little bit of a rebound next year as those students enroll next year. I will note, and you've got the sort of the cross-sheet that we like to look at as we compare elementary class sizes. I will note once again, and there's no way to do this without speaking to averages, but I do just want to note that I recognize that averages can obscure the truth to some degree. But when you look at the averages, you will see that class sizes in Guilford, grades K through 4, continue to be really positive. We have an average class size of 17.3 as of October 1st in all classes K through 4. And when you look at the bottom of the page, you'll note that our average kindergarten class size is 16. Average class size in grades 1 and 2 is 17, and average class sizes in grades 3 and 4 are at 18. It actually falls exactly where the board would like to see it fall based on the policy guidance. To call out the outliers, the single largest elementary class is a 4th grade class that sits at 23, and the single smallest class is a kindergarten class that currently sits at 13. We only have one section at 13 this year. We don't have three, as we did last year. And we currently have a high of, at Lakes Elementary School, we see kindergarten classes of 2 at 19 and 1 at 18. Remember, last year, we saw a high where there were 2 at 19 and 1 at 20 already. And so, again, while we do have outliers, the numbers have fallen really, really, sort of neatly where we'd like to see them. The only other piece I'd like to draw your attention to is the line graph. And what you'll see here is that the old enrollment study, the HCP enrollment study sunsets this year. That is the blue line on your graph, and you will see that that study projected us being at a district-wide enrollment that was way down from where we currently are. We had begun diverging from that some time ago. Couple of years ago, we solicited the SLAM study, and you'll see that this year, we are a little below where SLAM projected. You'll see that SLAM, that's the purple line, shows us leveling off and then beginning to grow again in the next five to 10 years. So we're a little below where SLAM projected us to be this year. Again, I speculate that a lot of that has to do with kindergarten enrollment. We will continue to track that enrollment and continue to look at what those numbers mean moving forward. It will mean that there may need to be some conversation at budget time about, again, those kindergarten sections. I do expect a rebound to 12 sections.
Yeah.
You're aware that in the last, I think in the last two of the last three years, we've had to increase to 13 sections. It's unusual this year to collapse to only 11. And we will also be looking at how some of those kindergartens move into first grade. It is likely that in one of the settings where we're currently maintaining three kindergartens, we may collapse to two first grades. And again, I'll speak more specifically to that during budget season, but wanted to share this with you tonight. These are the official enrollment numbers, and that's really it for my report this evening. I didn't have anything else to share.
Yeah, go ahead. And probably because this is just data that's just out from all the districts, how are we faring comparable to similar, you know, in our dirt? Or, you know, does it need a list?
We continue to be not only outperforming that previous enrollment study, the HCP enrollment study, but other similarly situated communities. There have been a lot of communities that have seen enrollment at the elementary decrease to the level that they closed schools and collapsed. We maintained significantly better than many of those other districts, and I think across the state, we're going to start seeing that leveling and then that increase. South Windsor is one of the specific, I mean, South Windsor is growing at a rate that no town in Connecticut is growing right now. They can't build schools fast enough. But in most other suburban towns similar to Guilford, you're seeing more significant enrollment decreases than we experienced, than we believe we're at the end of what we saw, even more moderate than the other communities. Excuse me.
No questions?
What do we think, you know, you said 50, we're down 50 at the high school? Is that, where is that traditionally in terms of where we typically are? And that seems a higher-than-normal number to be down, right?
We graduated one of our larger classes last year, and then again, by not bringing in a kindergarten class that offset, so we graduated a class that sat around 250, and we brought in a kindergarten of what was it?
181.
Right. So that's the significant difference. And so you see it in the high school going from about, was it 1,000? They dropped about 30 specifically at the high school. We're still above 1,000. We have not dropped below 1,000 at the high school, but we're right on the cusp. And again, I think we see some larger classes coming behind, but not, we won't see a class of 250 again, I think, for a little while at the high school.
Yeah.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
And I'll just share for the board and for the community that that SLAM study is available on our website. If people are interested in looking at that demographic study, it is available for everybody on our website.
And not lost at all by you, the line here is below, but it could be minimal and not particularly meaningful, depending on what happens over the next couple of years as well.
Correct.
Right. I mean, I'm sure it's within a margin of error that that makes sense, but clearly the HCP study was a little bit off.
That was right. They, and again, a lot of communities experienced that kind of decline.
No, that's right.
And we did not experience that kind of decline.
No, no, no. We were, right, less about their projections.
Kindergarten legislation, I bet, largely.
Yes. I think it's the kindergarten date that we're seeing that's impacting us. Again, right, if we had had, if we had enrolled 13 sections, right, there would be 30 more students there in kindergarten, and it would really mitigate that drop of 50 that we're talking about.
Yeah.
And with the 11 sections at kindergarten, are we, did we anticipate having that teacher in the budget for this year?
Yes. So that is currently, and usually this time of the year, I'm letting you know that we have two unbudgeted positions working in our district. Currently this year, we have one unbudgeted and unfilled position, which is a much better budgetary position to be in in the first month of school. And so we have that available to us. Should we see a need somewhere else, we could apply that, or it becomes a starting point for this year's budget build, which is a surplus, not a deficit. We usually start by coming and saying, we're short these two FTEs that we put in place. And so, again, we may deploy it if we see a need. Otherwise, we'll use it to begin this year's budget build.
And then it just bears, I think bears repeating that you noted, we only have one section of 13 in kindergarten. We could not, even if we wanted to, stay within our Board of Ed guidelines and take those three kindergarten classes and make them two. So that truly, this is, this spreadsheet is falling within our guidelines in a way that follows them and also reflects kind of what can be done to stay within those guidelines.
We really couldn't balance this any better, maintaining four neighborhood schools. The only way to balance that better would be if you had a district-wide grade-level structure so that you were always creating, right, 11 completely balanced classrooms. You simply can't do it when you have neighborhood schools. But this year, the numbers fell.
But none of these are, my point is, none of these are unnecessarily small. They're all strategically within.
Yep, very much so.
Excellent.
Any other comments or questions? All right. We're going to then move on to the board agenda. 9.1 is to act on a personnel item. This is to ratify the retirement of the following administrator. So this is Jason Bowden, who is our Assistant Superintendent of Operations. I do want to make a correction to the material in front of us. So we are approving this. The effective date should read June 30th, 2025.
Correct. We're not asking you to update this.
Right. Mr. Bowden is going to be with us for the rest of the academic year. He's actually often with us at our board meetings, couldn't be here tonight. But we're going to have plenty of opportunities to say this, but I do want to say, Mr. Bowden's been with us 13 years and has been a really effective administrator with us, so we will certainly be sad to see him go at the end of the year. But we do have to approve this. So I am going to ask for a motion to approve the retirement of the following administrator, again, to be effective on June 30th, 2025. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Again, we will have a full year still to work with Mr. Bowden, and we'll have plenty of opportunities to share our appreciation of all the work that he has done and will continue to do for the district in this year. 9.2 is to approve a donation of $5,008 for the Guilford Touchdown Club for the salary of an assistant coach. So we have a letter here noting this $5,008 donation from the Guilford Touchdown Club. Is there a motion to approve this donation? So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Okay, that's everyone. We have a couple of these, but I do want to note how appreciative we are that folks like those involved with the Guilford Touchdown Club do so much to support our student athletes. Okay, 9.3 is to approve a donation of $1,136.12 from the Guilford Touchdown Club for the cost of a coach bus. Is there a motion to approve this donation? So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right. That's everybody. Wonderful. 9.4 is to approve a donation of $1,805 from the Guilford High School Hockey Stick Club for the salary of an assistant coach. Is there a motion?
Field hockey.
Field hockey. What did I say?
Hockey.
Oh, sorry.
You got it kind of right.
I got it kind of right. No, but let's make sure.
There's two kinds of aye.
Let's make sure that we say the right thing. Field hockey. Is there a motion to approve this donation?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Terrific. And definitely thanks to the Guilford High School Field Hockey Stick Club for that donation.
And those all are for this current 2024 fall season, right? All three of them.
The assistant coach, yes.
Yes.
Guilford Touchdown Club, fall season?
Yes.
Yes.
It actually mentions it in both.
Yes.
Yep. That is correct. And an important distinction. Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. 9.5 is to receive for possible action the Guilford Public Schools' priorities and initiatives. This came to us first at our regular meeting in September. We had some discussion. We carried the discussion over to our workshop meeting at the end of September, had a really robust discussion about the initiatives, the priorities, and how they can be presented in a way that both can be used internally by our faculty, administrators, and staff, and then also publicly communicate to our community what we're doing. So I am going to turn it over, Dr. Freeman, to you and to Dr. Goss, to talk about what you're presenting tonight for our consideration.
Thank you. And I'd like to start by just appreciating, I know I did it at the close of the last meeting, and I'd like to start again by just sharing the appreciation for the quality of the conversation that we have had around these this year. We began this conversation as a board last June. We carried it over into August, working with the leadership team, and I thought our last two conversations at this level about these proposed priorities and initiatives has just been really helpful. And so much of the, well, when we first brought these to you in September formally, we were really excited because we had done a lot of wordsmithing, and we had essentially updated all of the jargon that was included in the priorities and initiatives so that we had cleared the cupboards, we had stopped reiterating some of the things that we'd done some time ago, and we updated all of the work that we were doing. But in the last conversation, we were asked pretty directly, who's the audience for this document? And so the way that the priorities and initiatives are presented now is that the exact same priorities and initiatives are presented in a more public-facing elevator speech version that we will use with the general public on most occasions. And quite honestly, when I don't have the document in front of me, this is the way that I would speak to it if the document weren't in front of me. And so when you look at the public-facing document that talks about our priorities, they are first and foremost to provide schools that strive to be physically and emotionally safe places for learning. Secondly, that are professional environments where educators are supported in pursuing high-quality instruction through dedicated professional learning. And if we achieve those first two, they will allow us then to create academic settings where students are challenged by academic tasks that require deep thinking, content knowledge, and interdisciplinary competencies. This is the way that we would want to share it with our public, with the parents who send their children to our schools, with the broader community, and it is almost jargon-free. It is simple language that presents those three nested environments that we strive to provide. The initiatives have simply, we've just removed some of the verbiage. And so the initiatives say that this year, we are focused on improving learning through a review of our special education programming, an exploration of restorative practices, continued curriculum revision and resource selection, implementation of our new Guilford Educator Growth Plan, and an initiation of a technology-in-schools advisory committee. We're also going to be conducting a new facility study that we've talked about. When you flip the page, what you see in the more built-out version is the version of the document that we would intend to use in-house. This would be the document that principals will use with faculties when they set building goals for the year. This would be the document principals would use with individual teachers, talking about their growth plan and what they are striving to provide. It is the document that coaches will lean on and that PLCs will collaboratively refer to as teachers work collaboratively and cooperatively. So in this document, it is the same three priorities and the same initiatives with some of the specific educational content verbiage brought back in. The jargon returns for this version. And while this remains similar to what you saw last time, there are some significant changes around priority number one, with our schools striving to be physically and emotionally safe places, built on foundations of belonging and restorative practice. There was some confusion around shared decision-making. We're really focused on restorative practice, and so we cleared that language up there. And then there was another item that is escaping me now that we also clarified. This document, however, remains essentially the same with some minor changes. It's the elevator speech that we're excited about providing tonight. And then backing it all up is simply our shared understanding of high-quality instruction. Whether you are a teacher who works in a pre-K classroom or a senior-level AP physics course, our understanding of high-quality instruction remains fundamentally the same, and it is that we center student learning. We support that learning by providing really challenging and engaging tasks. Students are required to work with knowledgeable others. Sometimes that's material. Sometimes that's an expert you read. Oftentimes... Oftentimes, that is a teacher in the classroom, and as often, it will be peers with whom you collaborate and work cooperatively. And that all exists in a holding environment where every child in this school knows that they belong in our schools. They're not tolerated despite who they are. They are celebrated because of who they are, and that is the environment that we strive to create in the schools academically, as well as socially and emotionally. And so again, I really appreciate the quality of the conversation we've been having. We're excited with where we've landed, and if this is approved tonight, the principals already have the draft version of the jargony one that they've been using in draft format, and I'm looking forward to beginning to publish and push out the more public-facing version of this in a way that's more digestible by our community this year. Really appreciate the feedback. We got excited about it this year.
Comments, feedback?
It's wonderful.
Thank you.
Yes. I just had one question. I think it's a great idea. The initiatives, do the initiatives need to be pared down? Are we losing any information that the public wanted to know? For instance, the last sub-bullet, initiation of an artificial intelligence, AI technology steering committee becomes a...
Technology in schools.
Right, are we missing some content that is gonna be important or not?
I mean, we're gonna publish both. The one is always gonna live behind the other.
Okay, then I'm not worried. I just don't want it, right, I don't want it to feel like there's information somehow that isn't getting communicated that's on the first one.
On the website, they're together, so there's the first one and then the second.
There is a typo there.
Oh.
It says initiation of a technology in schools advisory.
Right. Yeah. Technology in schools advisory committee?
Like it almost should be in quotes.
Or capitals, technology in schools.
Technology in schools, like, so they understand that that's the advisory committee.
Okay, yeah, I'm just misreading it, so yeah.
No, but that feels like a run-on.
Yeah, it does.
We'll sharpen that.
And I was just gonna say, I like that it says technology in schools, because right this month and right now, in the fall, it's AI. Who knows what the spring is bringing?
That's a good point.
And so I like that it was more expansive on the first version.
Excellent.
I would imagine that in a Board of Finance meeting, I might only share the first slide in a budget presentation, but on the website, and they will always live the two together.
All right, other thoughts or questions or comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, I told you, we got excited about the feedback.
Excellent. So you're asking if possible action on this tonight?
Yes.
Do we feel comfortable doing so, and if so, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Everybody, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I still can't get used to this next item, setting the 2025 graduation date before we have winter. But, but we do know the trend. So we are being asked to act on setting the graduation date for this academic year for Friday, June 13th, 2025. There is no doubt the huge advantage that it is falling on a Friday for families that have folks coming.
I love that it's Friday the 13th.
Oh, I know, Jen.
I'm so excited. Just ask my daughters.
I thought that was gonna go up when you said.
I didn't even, I have a child who is born on the 13th, so it's just not a thing I worry about. Is there any other important discussion about this date before we move on?
So important to remember that even should the last day of school move because of snow or other closings, graduation will be held on the 13th. Other students will continue to come to school, and seniors will still be invited to attend school, and if necessary, they may need to complete some exams or other requirements after the graduation date. But graduation, once set, will be locked in on that date.
All right. Any questions, concerns, discussion around this? Is there a motion to approve the request to set graduation for Friday, June 13th, 2025?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, that is unanimous.
Yeah.
Is it?
Yeah, it's like a week and a half.
Oh, that's nice, huh? Nice holiday break. A nice holiday break, all right. 9.7 is to act on the consolidated grants application. This is something we do every year.
Yes.
Is there anything either you or Dr. Goss want to tell us about this, or?
It's an annual submission, we're required to point out where we're going to distribute those federal dollars. We get relatively small amounts in Guilford compared to other locations. So it's here, it shows you where those dollars are going. I don't know that it requires comment beyond a request for approval. We can certainly ask a question if there's any question.
Okay, so just for the viewing public, this is the 2024-25 federal program entitled Under Every Student Succeeds Act. Again, this is something we do every year. We have Title I, Part A, allocation of $93,486. The purpose of Title I, Part A of the Elementary and Secondary Education Act of 65, as amended by the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, is to provide all children a significant opportunity to receive a fair, equitable, and high-quality education and to close educational achievement gaps. So that money goes to that Title I, Part A.
You saw a report on a lot of that at your last meeting.
That's right.
This summer.
The summer programs. Title II, Part A, an allocation of $38,854. This is to increase student achievement consistent with the challenging state academic standards, improve the quality and effectiveness of teachers, principals, and other school leaders, increase the number of teachers, principals, and other school leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement in schools, and provide low-income and minority students greater access to effective teachers, principals, and other school leaders. So something like this allocation will go to professional development. Title III, Part A, the allocation is smaller, $6,412. And the Title III is to improve English language acquisition and language enhancement. And then Title IV, Part A, is $10,000. Title A, part, sorry, Title IV, Part A, is to improve student support and academic enrichment to ensure schools prepare students to graduate from high school ready for college and career success. So the total application, 131,000, sorry, $343 through Guilford Public Schools' application, 6,334 through the LEARN Consortium, for a total of $137,677. So we are being asked to approve the submission of this consolidated grants application. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. 9.8 is to act on the revised educator diversity hiring plan. As a reminder, Guilford Public Schools did put a plan together. They submitted it to the state of Connecticut. The state of Connecticut simply asked for some expansion on the plan. They were happy with the plan, but were asking for some expanded language. Dr. Freeman, anything you want to add to that explanation?
No, essentially, the state was fine with the what that we had planned to do. They asked us to be more expansive in the goal-setting structure. Essentially, they wanted us to use their goal-setting language, and so we went back, we made those revisions. Dr. Goss and Mr. Bowden worked on the document, revised specifically the data collection and the success measures. It's back before you, it does require your approval again. There have not been significant changes. I will say again what I shared when we presented this to you the first time, the state of Connecticut is now requiring every school district to have the expanding educator diversity plan, increasing educator diversity plan. It's a requirement at this time, and we're required to use their template. But essentially, these are actions that we have been attempting to implement for some time now. We have been talking about the importance of diversifying our teacher staff to the students in our schools for some time now. So we're pleased that the state is moving in the same direction. Every district in the state is required. I still worry that when districts in the state are competing for the same really small pool of teachers of color or teachers with more diverse backgrounds, experiences, we're in competition with each other. I think the real solution is going to come from growing that pool, and that's work that we need to do at a state level cooperatively. We're happy to resubmit this district plan, and we'll continue working on this.
Great.
Any questions about what we have in front of us?
All right, again, so we're being asked to act on and approve this educator diversity plan, educator diversity plan. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that everybody? Okay, wonderful. 9.9 is to receive our 2025-26 preliminary budget timeline.
Budget season.
It's time!
Just finished.
I know, it does feel like we just finished. So we do have a timeline in front of us dated through April, which is when the referendum will be held. One thing important for our public, tomorrow night, so Wednesday, October 16th, our Board of Ed Operations Committee will hold a public input session in this room, the library at Guilford High School, starting at 7:30. That is an opportunity for anyone in the public who is interested in sharing with the board any thoughts or requests for consideration for inclusion in the upcoming budget. This is the opportunity. A reminder that we do a couple of public forums throughout the year around the budget. We will hold two at the end of January, once the administration has presented us with a draft budget. This is more preliminary. This opportunity tomorrow night, again, is for anyone in the public to come and ask for consideration of things for that budget. Does anybody have other questions around what we see here? A number of meetings that will involve the board, a number of other steps that are simply steps in the process.
I think we say it every year, but this is the public's opportunity to really have a voice before the budget is crafted. These are the most important meetings to come to if you really are passionate about getting something built into this budget.
Yeah, absolutely.
I was just gonna reiterate what John said, it's just, you know, we have this Wednesday, but then the next time is in January, the 27th and the 28th. So if you're not ready for this first one, definitely try it, but the first is usually the best, it's early.
And if you're not ready for this one tomorrow, we all have emails.
Exactly, right, no, I was just gonna say the same thing.
And we want to hear from you, so.
That's right.
Please.
So if you cannot come tomorrow night, or are not ready, but think of something in a month, as John just said, all of our emails are online. Excellent. All right, 9.10 is to receive for possible action ratification of the contract between the Guilford Board of Ed and Unite Here Local 217, which is our dining services employees. I'm gonna ask Mr. Dalventura to give us a summary of what that contract represents as a member of that negotiation team.
So together with Jen Baldwin, we were able to represent the board with our dining services team. This is a dedicated group of individuals that not only feed our children every single day, but do a lot more than just that, such as catering events at all public schools. So there's a lot that goes on with this group of individuals. This group is represented by the Unite Here Local 217 Union. This ratification of the agreement goes from July 1st, 2024, through June 30th, 2027. I want to go through the agreement, just kind of highlight some of the main points. It's a large agreement, so I just want to kind of touch upon what the main discussion of the agreement had to do with. The first one was wages. We have a three-year increase of wages. Year one is 3%, year two is 3%, year three is 3%, as well as an increase to the high school cook manager's rate of pay. When we talked about insurance, we agreed upon an increase of 1% over three years by the employees. So year one is a 17.5% contribution by the employee, year two, 18% by the employee, year three, 18.5% by the employee. We talked a little bit about catering, extra hours, assignments outside of the workday. This is what I referenced as to catering and whatnot. So we talked about billing the school district, the employees to be paid their hourly rate plus 25% of their hourly rate of pay when doing those assignments outside of the workday. New hires, originally, at the date of hire, the new hire was paid 80% of their pay rate through a probationary period. That is now changed to 90%. And after successful completion of the probationary period, they automatically go up to 100% of their classified wage rate. There was some additional changes to personal pay, sorry, personal days, in terms of rolling over unused personal days, turning them into sick days. Any unused paid personal days at the end of the year shall be credited as additional paid sick leave days. Personal leave days shall not be used to extend a school vacation or holiday period unless approval is granted by the superintendent or the director of dining services. We had some additional verbiage in terms of funeral leave, should that need to be used. In an effort to expedite posting of jobs and hiring of jobs, we reduced the length of posting from seven to four days a vacant position is posted internally. This will accelerate the vacancy filling process. And then lastly, I think the only other one to touch upon, there was an agreement to be made that in terms of uniforms, there's some new language in there, should we experience like a very hot day, for instance, by mutual agreement, alternative uniforms shall be considered for extreme temperature or lack of ventilation. That's largely everything summarized. It is a lengthy agreement. And I will say, this was my first real go at working on an agreement like this. It was a pleasure to meet with the dining services team, and I'm glad that we were able to get this done.
Wonderful. Anything else to add, questions? All right, so we're being asked then to ratify this contract, and so I am gonna ask for a motion to do so.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is everybody, unanimous. Terrific, thank you.
I just wanted to thank the members of the board and Mr. Bowden for all the time that goes into this work. We very much appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Pleasure.
Absolutely. All right, the policy committee has a number of recommendations for us, receive items for tonight.
Yes.
All right.
So I'm going to talk about them kind of collectively, because they are all related to Title IX. So we've been talking about Title IX for, I think, over a year, actually. And we now finally have the state revisions, the state's recommendations. So these are our revisions based on the state's recommendations for Title IX, which is the prohibition of sex discrimination and harassment. The first one that you're receiving are revisions to Policy 5002 and Regulation 5002, which specifically relate to students. The second batch is Policy 4112 and Regulation 4112, which relate to personnel. So these are actual, they're complete rewrites of our existing policy. So read them, because they're brand-new, there's nothing I can really show you that's a change from what we've had before. These are complete redos. Things to note, significant changes are really around streamlining the process, the investigative process of a Title IX suit. So you'll notice that the process should move much more quickly. The same person can now be an investigator and a decision-maker, as opposed to having it spread throughout multiple people. So really, we should wind up seeing a more streamlined approach to Title IX cases. Also significantly, we now have applicable policy for each grade category. So historically, we had a batch of policy that represented everyone from K through college. So as you can imagine, something that a kindergartner might do is definitely not, should not be handled the same way that a junior in college should wind up handled. So the new policy actually accounts for age and... and maturity of students. So take a look through that, and we can have a further discussion about it at the next meeting. Any questions?
If I may, I would just like to note that the entire leadership team has been trained in the new Title IX requirements. We are following the new Title IX requirements. This is another case of policy catching up with practice. The state law, the federal law supersedes our policy. We are following state law. We're applying this properly and accurately. And when we come back to this next month, and if you approve it at that meeting, our policy will be catching up with statute and with practice in the system.
All right. Kristen, if folks have questions about any of this, can I reach out to you in the last?
Me, Jason Bowden.
In the next month? Okay, terrific. We will then expect to be prepared to act on these at our next meeting, at our next regular meeting. Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, we are up to Agenda Item 10, Reports of Committees. Any other reports coming on the Policy Committee?
Sure. The Policy Committee met two weeks ago. We had, we started a conversation around suicide prevention, so that will wind up being a continuing topic for the Policy Board. And we've also started a discussion around cell phone use. No surprise to anyone. So we are going to take, we're gonna wind up handling that. It's gonna take a while, right? We'll spend a lot of time kind of discussing what we think is appropriate for cell phone use, and try to think it through, and come up with a policy, not in the short term. So it's a conversation that'll be ongoing.
Okay, wonderful. Operations Committee, you were...
I have no update.
You have to say.
I heard there was a very long meeting.
It was not, it was...
It was tedious.
Quite a short meeting. We did get, as we do every month, an update from Mr. Gurnum on facilities, which was helpful, just to get a sense of where things are at. But otherwise, it was actually a rather brief meeting. Curriculum instruction assessment.
The committee meets in two weeks.
All righty. Any liaisons to town meetings, anything to mention, town committees? And then I am reaching out to the Learn Board of Directors. Learn is, has a Board of Directors with a representative from each of the participating school districts. There are a number of school districts who have identified or identified as vacant. They could be in a similar situation to us, which is that we have trouble finding a single person, because these meetings are all happening during the workday, that's able to commit. So I'm gonna be working with them. Years ago, we took turns going to meetings. I'm gonna see if that continues to be a reasonable option from there.
That feels like it might be really hard.
I think it is.
So my experience, I was the Learn Board of Directors representative for the district for two years. And much like joining this board, it kind of takes a little bit of time to understand who the players are, what they're talking about. So I do think if we wound up taking, that would almost be one and a half a year each. I think that would be pretty tricky.
I completely agree with you. One of the things I'm hoping to do is see if they have suggestions on what happens when they have districts who are unable to field a person in the way that you were able to do for us.
Can I ask the question, are they only in person, or do they do hybrid meetings?
So I will tell you, I had that outstanding question, and then dove into minutes for the last five or six meetings. And indeed, some people are joining via Zoom. So that may provide that more options. So anyway, I'm gonna be talking with them, just because I want us to be able to participate, but I also want to do it in a way that makes sense for us, but also makes sense for them, right? It may not also make sense for them to have someone different from our Guilford Board of Ed every month.
If someone has the time to do it, it really was interesting. I learned a lot about our surrounding DURGs. It was worthwhile.
Great. Well, I'm gonna find out as much as I can, so that we can then make a informed decision about how we participate in that, so. All right, now, number 11 on the agenda is public comments. This does not necessarily have to be related to the board agenda. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the board this evening? And if so, we ask you to come up to the podium. If you would, provide your name and address, and then if you would, keep it to three minutes. Welcome, thank you.
Hi, I am Sarah Salato, and I'm at 51 Kendall Court, right here in Guilford. So first of all, I wanted to thank the board and all that you have done for our LGBTQ+ students and community and staff. I have firsthand experience with how the high school, in particular, staff was with my own child, and I appreciate how on top of things they were with changes that he needed. I very much appreciate the training that the district has provided for the staff to educate and educate them on how to support the LGBTQ students. That being said, there are still numerous of stories of students being continuously bullied because of their gender identity or sexuality. Students who don't want to attend school, who deal with terrible mental health issues, and even are suicidal because of how their peers are treating them. Again, I have firsthand experience of that with my own child. As much as you have all done, and I, again, I'm truly appreciative, as I've seen some other things happening in other towns currently, as a district, I do believe that we need to do more. The lack of participation in our Guilford Pride event the past two years from the school has spoken volumes to our LGBTQ students. I have been to a couple of town Pride events myself recently, one in Madison and one in North Haven, where the schools have been represented. In North Haven, who is a much, much bigger district than we are, and have a terrible, they have terrible negative stuff going on around the LGBTQ students and staff at the moment. They have a huge issue happening. They, last year, actually bust students from the middle schools and high schools to the flag raising. And I know that that would mean an awful lot if something like that happened in our district. I'm not asking for that to happen. But what I am asking is that you guys would consider the schools to be involved in some way or another, and however way that they want to be. I am here with three committee members, Julie, Rebecca, and Barb, and we are here to ask that the schools be involved in some way or another. I need you to think about, again, what we are saying to the LGBTQ community, to our students, who, again, with all that you're doing as a district, and as a board, and as a staff, and all the training that you are doing, unfortunately, it is not trickling down to the young students who need to see it. I think if they see their schools involved in a big Pride event, and we're going into our third year, first year, we had a couple of thousand attendees. Last year, you know, because of weather, it was probably somewhere around 500 or more. We have wonderful speakers. Our town is totally behind us. I could not, could not ask for more support from Matt Howie and all of our representatives. But the schools being silent is a lot. And the first year I did, I did ask Dr. Freeman, and I kind of came to you very early, and you were like, thanks for coming so early. And then the second year, I came a little bit later, and for various reasons, you and I had a long conversation about the difficulties that you have. And I appreciate, I cannot bear to think, all that you guys have gone through and continue to go through, when there are quite a few people that are being very loud about these type of things. But I'm here to tell you that there's many of us that need this. There's many students who need this. My child, last year, I sent him a video and a picture of the Pride flag being up. And I said to him, "I can't help but think how you would have felt if, growing up in this town, you would have seen that, if it would have helped." And he said, "It absolutely would have." So we have to think about our students. And you know what? If you come, you get these fabulous sweatshirts and amazing t-shirts. It's so much fun, and it is so appropriate. There's nothing inappropriate that happens. So what do we do moving forward? Do I need to come to every single Board of Ed meeting and bother you guys? What do we do to make this happen? It is early on, it's October, but before you know it, May is gonna be here. And this event is May 17th, with a rain date of May 18th, and we always use rain dates. So I don't...
Thank you.
Yes, so please give that some thought. Let me know what I need to do moving forward to make sure that we can get the schools involved. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board? Come right on up.
My name is Julie Schlesel, and I've lived here in Guilford for 16 years, raised my two sons with my wife of 20-something years. And I wanted to thank, it was very nice to hear about diversity and inclusion, and Dr. Freeman was speaking, and then segue later into suicide prevention. So this is all connected. I want to find out from Guilford what can be done to have the schools be more included and supportive of the gay community for a lot of personal reasons and reasons to help a lot of the kids that might be struggling and bullied, and just the whole atmosphere around it. I know that my kids were teased about a lot of things in a lot of minority categories, and having two moms was kind of the exception. And we had to educate some of the teachers when they were growing up. And then when they would say, you know, calling your mom and dad, and, you know, I'm like, there's different kinds of families. So anyways, I don't want to keep this too long, but I want to reiterate what Sarah was saying, and I would like to see the schools not be afraid to be involved in Pride. And I think that hopefully, the tides will turn, and this rhetoric and fear that is happening, it's 2024, so it's time for the page to turn in terms of what's going on with hate and prejudice and everything. So I don't know what else to...
Thank you.
If there are any questions, but, thank you.
Yeah. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward?
So shifting gears a little bit, and ironically, apparently ahead of schedule, since I won't be able to make the meeting tomorrow evening. My name is Kathy Haskell. I live at 189 Little Meadow Road. I wanted to start by thanking the counseling office. Here has been fantastic in a similar but slightly different vein. My son has gone through some bullying things as well, and they have been fabulous here. This school has felt like the first environment he has felt welcomed since he's been in Guilford. So that is wonderful. At the same time, we had a meeting the other day, and I found out some details with regard to the financial literacy course. That seems to be a drum I've been beating a little bit this year. And it's concerning to me that we are very behind the power curve with regard to that. It was passed legislation mandating class of 2027, and going forward, has to take this financial literacy semester course. The 23, 24 year wasn't offered at all. This year, it's offered a very limited basis. So having a certain student with certain academic achievement requests and abilities, he's unable to take it this year, because it's only offered for two periods, very specifically for the both semesters. So in light of the fact that seemingly there's some unfilled positions or unnecessary positions, perhaps there can be some negotiating to realot some funds for the next semester especially, but certainly next year for the budget, to have a teacher, my understanding is it's one teacher that's teaching just two periods. We have 260 students in that class, and then roughly 250 for every class thereafter. 100 students a year is not gonna get the job done for these students that need to graduate in the next three years. So that's just not acceptable. And it's concerning to me that it doesn't seem to be any kind of a concern for anybody else. So perhaps people just don't know. But I can tell you that my son and a number of students that are in his particular advanced placement class this year, which is only offered in one section, are just unable to take what's offered currently. And I understand you're never gonna be able to meet everybody's needs. There are gonna be choices that have to be made. But if it's a state mandate, this board and this administration need to make every effort to make those courses available to everybody as much as it can be. And it's just not. And so what's really concerning is, it doesn't even seem like it's a consideration for next semester, and I'm not sure it's a consideration for next year. So I think having additional funds to have a teacher, I understand there's credentials, I understand there's specific needs for those teachers, but find the teachers. Get out there now. I mean, there's classes in other schools that were offered in last year's school and this year's school year. So now we're behind the power curve there, and it doesn't seem like there's any real pressure to get that teacher onboard here. And these kids are gonna graduate, they have two more academic years after this. And if they want to take advanced placement, they're gonna be very limited doing that, because they have to take this class to graduate. So irrespective of what they've achieved in middle school, to be able to get set up to take advanced placement in high school, they may not be able to, because they have to take this class. So I urge this board and this administration to really work on getting those people here, because I think that's really important. State mandate, I understand it's unfunded, but if we have these abilities to get these people here, I think it's important that you do it. And I really do think that the counselors work really hard to try to work the schedules for all these kids, to feed all the needs that they need. But if you only have one AP Chem class, you can't, you either take it or you don't. So it's really, really unfortunate that some of these kids have been left out and left off. These are high achieving students, who have even higher achievements that they'd like to make, but won't be able to, because they're gonna be relegated to take this later, when they can take even further advanced classes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening?
First, I very much respect and appreciate your time and your service very much. Polyreader 280 Sage Hollow Road. So nationally, nearly a quarter of high school students have seriously considered suicide, with 10% attempting it, per the CDC. And Connecticut's rates are increasing, including youth dying by suicide and at younger ages. Guilford's suicide attempt rate in the Journal of Adolescent Health was shockingly high before the pandemic. And a poor choice continues to inflict harm on our teens here, and increase the possibility of tragic outcomes. So our high school starts 50 minutes, 5-0, earlier than the minimum recommended by the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, massive, you know, supported science. But added on to this, I think many may not know, that the very last bus, I believe, arrives by 7:15 or before. So that's a half hour before classes even start. And this conflicting this harshly with teens' natural biologic clock has negative impact. I think a lot of us know, you know, academic and athletic performance, mental health, even their blood pressure, substance abuse, depression, anxiety, you know, our schedule is adding to all of this. And it does not actually have to be this way. For 15 years, Wilton has had a later start time. Seven years ago, Greenwich moved an hour later, and they kept it, despite Paul, you know, passed on some rumblings here and there, but it just, it stayed, and it's fine. And more and more districts across the nation, Guilford is supposedly a leader with best practices. And I have, you know, great respect, and I think in many ways we are, but totally not in this case. And it's systemic across the district for the teens. And I think it's really rather ridiculous for us to wait around and just hope and pray that there'll be some statewide change, and we can just jump onboard with that. I think that is just beyond kicking the can down the road. It's just, it's not, I don't think it's responsible to do that. So there's athletics. Clearly, other districts have athletic programs with later start times, right? So that cannot be a full stop reason. So also, I think it's important that seven years ago, when we went through this whole process of looking at this, I believe it was really fundamentally flawed at the outset, protecting and prioritizing instructional time above everything else, even student health. There was just a 15-minute shift that took passing time throughout the entire day away from students, turned the screws a little bit tighter.
I'm gonna ask you, you're coming to time, so if you could wrap it up.
Thank you. And after sixth grade, our students don't even have a full half hour of lunch. But instructional time was reduced by only... instructional time was reduced by only four minutes. We all know that first period is of quite a lot less value, and then the students go along and they're impaired, they're undermined physically, mentally, and impaired educationally throughout the rest of the day, and by before the end of the week, they're strung out.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to, it would be much better to have a shorter school day. We know there are so many positives, and I do just want to say, you know, there's been much more in the national media and apparent support, but I did want to say this to you, this to the board. Times are very different. The board used to have condoned the mascot. We have a new chair now. We have only one board member who was around during that time.
Okay, I am going to ask you to wrap it up.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, and, you know, no longer is it just me at every board and committee meeting. There have been Cs of green shirts, many people who have come and spoken.
Thank you. I am going to ask you to wrap it up in fairness to all the other speakers. We asked you to keep to three minutes, so.
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, feel free to email us.
I respect your fortitude very much. You've shown that you can stand up for issues. So this, you guys have ethical responsibility to address it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? No? All right. Thank you for those who participated. We are, I don't have any closing comments, any closing comments from you? All right. We are, we do have an executive session scheduled for this evening to occur now on a personnel item, Assistant Superintendent Operations Position. We will exit into executive session, hold our executive session, come out of executive session, and will only be an open meeting for the purposes of adjourning the meeting itself. We will not be taking any votes or having any further discussion. So I am going to ask for a motion to move into executive session, please.
Somebody, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you to the community who came and who joined us via livestream.
Thank you.
All right. Can you move on?